You got it, Ben?
Yeah, I got it.
Hey, Johnny.
Hi, this is Alderman Hill. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. How you doing, Johnny?
All right, how are you?
Good. Nine, ten. Domingo, it's your call, seven oh two. We are, uh, we have a forum for sure, so. Domingo, you're good.
Are we ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. All right, on, on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, the Governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to public health concerns. As head of this body, I have determined that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of disaster. This meeting, as you know, will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a quorum. Prior to commencement of this meeting, all members of this body were verified and can see and hear one another. I further find that the physical presence of members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster and more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an accessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contend moranously. Here, all discussion and roll call votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, and via Zoom teleconference. Notice of these arrangements have been given in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded as adopted by mayoral order. Alderman, Tom, and Holly of this body is physically present at a regular meeting location. All votes shall be conducted by roll call, and a revading record of this meeting shall be made and maintain accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Uh, if you could read the heading, Mr. City Clerk.
Yes, this is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Blue Island, uh, held remotely on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty at seven PM, as permitted by Executive Order twenty-two-zero-seven, signed by Illinois Governor J.B. Pritzker on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty, in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. To participate remotely, download the Zoom app or call three-one-two-six-two-six-six-seven-nine-nine. The City Council meeting webinar ID is eight-four-nine-one-six-eight-zero-seven-four-four-three with a password of one-two-four-one-four-four.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Uh, we need to call to order, uh, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Could I have roll call, Mr. City Clerk?
Sure. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here. Cosidus. Cosidus absent. Rita. Rita here. Donahue. Donahue absent. Holly.
Here.
Holly here. Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald here. Hill.
Here.
Hill here. Mac.
Here.
Mac here. Carr.
Here.
Carr here. Zelman. Zelman absent. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker here. Stevo.
Here.
Stevo here. Johnson.
Here. Here.
Okay, Johnson here. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander here. We have, uh, eleven present, Your Honor.
Thank you much. We move on to number four, Presentation of General Proceeding. I'll need a motion to approve the City Council minutes for the date of August the eleventh, twenty-twenty. With a motion and a second, please.
This is Alderman Carr. Make a motion.
Bellato seconds.
Thank you much. No question.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh, Mayor, thank you. Page, uh, six, Resolution Number twenty-twenty dash oh thirty-three and twenty-twenty dash oh thirty-four. Alderman, Stevo voted no.
All right, well, so noted.
Thank you.
Any other? If no other questions, roll call, please.
Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
So, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Could you read number five, Mr. City Clerk?
Sure. Public comment shall be made by email only. Persons interested in making a public comment shall email their public comment to arhoiser@cityofblueisland.org by August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty at six PM. Email public comments received will be read during the public comment portion of the meeting by Randy Hoiser.
Hey, do we have any public comments?
We've got three this evening. First one is from Michael Green. Um, do black and white arrest procedures differ in Blue Island? Is this a regular procedure? I filed the charges because I am the victim. If the tables were turned and he was the victim, my question as to how my arrest would have been undertaken. I am sure you understand what I mean. If not, I'll be glad to meet with you. For now, I am waiting my court date and my charges against him will stand. In addition, has his arrest been made public record? I could not find any information online or your website to confirm his arrest. Cook County Central Bureau, Cook County Prosecutor Office, et cetera. It is unfortunate that John Erickson chose to exhibit his hatred of black people at these trying times, including during the pandemic. Black Lives Matter. Next one.
Pardon me, Randy?
Yes.
That is not the entire email that he sent.
Right, but it said, it started out with my, I started where my pub, where it started, my public comments. There's a bunch of other information in there that, the way I read was, I read from my public comment from there on. I'd be happy to read the whole thing.
It says, the, the email that I got says I'm requesting that you include my public comment at the regular city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-fifth.
I'll read, I'll read the whole thing. I mean, it just, I, there's a lot of time people will say stuff beforehand and then, um, and then go into where the public comment begins, but, uh... The email starts with, please excuse the broken sentences. My PC at the present is experiencing difficulties. Mike Green on eight-twenty-two, seven-fifty-six PM wrote to Randy Hoiser, City Clerk, CC Domingo Vargas, Mayor, CC Police Chief Arzab, open attachment. I'm requesting that you include my public comment at the regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-fifth at seven PM. Subject, John Erickson, twenty-two forty-five D, Prairie Circle, Blue Island, Illinois. Blue Island Report number twenty-dash zero-two-zero-one-nine-seven-seventeen-twenty and eight-seven-twenty with supplemental number twenty-three twenty-two dated eight-eight-twenty. Criminal damage to property during the timeframe from eight-seventeen till eight-seven, nothing was done because of that. He returned to brazenly harass me a second time on eight-eight-twenty. After purchasing and installing a camera, he was caught on tape and arrested on eight-ten. Please refer to pictures, videos, and emails and letters submitted to Mayor, City Council, Blue Island Police Department. Mr. Hoiser, in nineteen ninety-nine, twenty years ago, I moved to Blue Island, Illinois. I have never been subjected to any racial harassment. I am now. Sixty-eight years old, retired, and now I have become a hate target of my white neighbor, John Erickson. By now, you know I am a black man. There are two other families at this address who have also been harassed, Mr. Erickson, by Mr. Erickson, who is white. However, I have an issue and what, I have an issue and witnessed how John Erickson was arrested after the police knocked on the door and he spoke with him and he was allowed to close the door or turn inside his home for some time, return to his door and leave the, with the police, no handcuffs, and allowed to walk behind two uniformed officers to the police car. I have requested that he at least be interviewed, interrogated, et cetera, as to his intentions and beliefs. In addition, both incidents occurred in early morning hours, which makes me, which makes sleeping at night very uncomfortable. What will he do next? And then he went into my public comment to black lives, matter, to black and white arrest procedures different, which I read.
Randy, I thank you for actually reading that comment fully because it was alleged, uh, hate crime. And, um, you know, during these times, I wouldn't like to see anything negative, you know, pointed towards Blue Island, but for us to be able to be responsible, responsible and responsive. Thank you.
It's definitely a serious matter.
Is there the other two? Is there other comments?
Yeah, they're coming now, yeah. So, Kathy Andel Haskell. The parking on twenty-four-hundred block of Oak Street is extremely congested due to employees and patients from the Cook County Medical Center parking on the block between seven-thirty AM and four-thirty PM. Residents are unable to park anywhere near their house or apartment during those hours. If, if we leave, when we return, there is no parking available. We were informed by the city that the patients would park in the city lot next to the building and the employees would park in the lot on Gregory. However, there are many employees and patients that do not follow these rules. Parking issues have been brought to the attention of several items and the city clerk for several months with no resolution and no current proposal on the table. Please, please, please either have employees and patients park in the designated parking lots or install resident-only signs on the streets affected. And let the record show that you have... Just came. Hands up.
Excuse me, Randy?
Yes.
Regarding that last public comment, is that being reviewed in Community Development and by Howard? Because initially I was told it should come to judiciary, which I talked to you and you told me it was, uh, it was too, too soon. It was a preliminary. So, I wanted to be sure because when the constituent called me, um, I wanted to make sure that, uh, it should be, should it go back to community development and Howard's going to take a look at that residential parking on Oak Walnut and Prairie? We could put the residential signs like between seven and seven or eight or whatever it is.
And I have, I've talked with, uh, in Community Development and also with, uh, with Jim Clinker and his committee because I'm in all these Zoom meetings and, and, um, after talking with the Haskells and whatever, I, I would like to recommend and we can bring this to committee that the whole area bounded by Hundred Twenty-seventh and Grove and Greenwood on the west and Gregory on the east, the resident-only Blue Island parking, because a lot of the employees from Cook County don't live on Blue Island. A lot of the other area that we're having issues with parking is the Ravens and the Vault, and a lot of those patrons are not from Blue Island. I really think that that would be, uh, an appropriate first step, but I was, I wasn't going to bring it up tonight. I was going to talk with, with the committee chairs about that one, next steps for that, so, yes.
Okay, so I should put it on the Judiciary Committee for September and, um, we'll ask the, uh, attorney to draw up an ordinance with those specifics?
And it would be based on what the, what comes out of Fred's committee and, and Jim's committee and Candace's committee?
I know they already discussed it municipal services. That's why I was told that we needed to move it forward.
Well, I haven't talked directly with Howard about it. I was going to talk to him tomorrow in our, in our, uh, in our, uh, COVID meeting when he's there so we can at least see what the feasibility of that approach would be.
Okay, please let me know when I...
Absolutely, absolutely. And the last public comment is from Carol DePace Green. Together, hashtag Blue Island Strong, we want to first let everyone know Region Ten, that's us, are at a six-point-eight positivity and climbing, and that is not bad. Wear your face mask, and if you need one, let your elected officials know. Together, hashtag Blue Island Strong wants to thank our donors. Blue Island Mayor Domingo Vargas, Blue Island City Clerk Randy Hoiser, Alderman William Cosidus, Alderman Johnny Hill, Alderman Dexter Johnson, Alderman Ellen Stevo, Blue Island City Attorney Horvath, Sanji Brooks, Angela Green, Dexter Johnson Junior, Patty Moroni, Blue Island Public Library, Captain Louis Acosta, uh, Blue Island Salvation Army, Eisenhower High School, Patty Fellowitz, Patty's grooming, Marshall Lee, Tommy Lee Memorial Fund in honor of her son Tommy Lee, who grew up and lived in Blue Island. A ten thousand dollar reward remains available for information leading to his unsolved murder, and Lopez Tyre, who contributed to their, to our August thirteenth event. A special thank you to Police Officer Jeremy Rhodes for setting up the barricades. Together, hashtag Blue Island Strong will distribute face masks, gloves, skin sanitizer, and food on Saturday, September twelve, twenty-twenty, from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. Well supplied as last, and placed in our high school. And that's all the public comments, Randy.
Thank you. We'll move on to number six, Report of City Officials Regarding the Mayor's Announcements. I have a couple. Uh, first of all, as you just heard with, uh, Mr. DePace Green mentioned, COVID, uh, as you've probably seen within the last day or so, the numbers in Will County as well as Kentucky County, the governor has issued new guidelines for those specific things. Our concern again is that numbers continue to be rising slowly but surely, and we want to stop that as best as we can, both here in Blue Island and hopefully in the surrounding suburbs. So again, follow CDC and State, uh, Governor Pritzker's guidelines regarding face masks, social distancing, and all other requirements. Uh, second, as you know, we recovered, not only us, but the whole Chicago metropolitan area with the severe, uh, tornadoes or fifteen tornadoes, they say, they mentioned. Two of them were close to us, one in Malothean and one in Oak Forest. As a result, while they were re, uh, rebuilding some of the structures, especially like in Harvey, Dalton, and the surrounding suburbs, as well as here in Blue Island, we did have our, our representative from ComEd come into the city. He toured the city with staff and, uh, made notes as to what infrastructures need to be changed as soon as possible. So we try to avoid this being proactive. So when I give that, I'll try to get those, those locations out to the public as to what their tax money and their, their money is going towards. Um, we want to thank, as was mentioned before, Lopez Tyres, uh, did contribute a pallet of forty-eight cases of bottled water at the last PPE, uh, distribution and food distribution at Eisenhower. Again, going back to ComEd, we want to thank them for, uh, donating six hundred cases of bottled water. I want to thank all the volunteers and specifically all the aldermen, and you know who you are, who came out and distributed it for, uh, to all of their wards for their constituents. Again, thank you to ComEd, the aldermen, and the volunteers for doing, it was a, a twelve-hour, uh, from seven to seven. We were basically there at the John D. Vita Rec Center giving that out. Uh, again, a kudos out to Alderman Stevo, Alderman Dexter Johnson, and the, uh, uh, Public Health and Safety Committee for pushing on that ALS and the ambulance. Again, uh, congratulations for that. Uh, the Cal Sac Trail, if you haven't seen, it's nearing completion. Uh, if you haven't tried it, try it before it's completed, but they're winding down as to that. Uh, we want to thank all the volunteers who's been picking up and cutting grass and all over town, from the north side to the south side. I know that's going to be continued right before winter. Um, as you know, the Western Avenue Bridge, the construction is continuing. It's a major project. It's probably another year before its completion. Uh, we know it's delays and stuff like that, but in the long run, it'll be worth it. And we got, as I mentioned at the last city council, we got a letter from IDOT that they would, uh, look into painting that bridge as well as the Ashland Bridge, uh, as we quote, "Blue Island blue." Regarding the advisory board, I do have a list of, uh, candidates, not candidates, who are members. Uh, one is Luis Acosta, uh, former Alderman Nancy Thompson, uh, Carol DePace Green, Nancy Madrigal, Pastor Lloyd Kohler Junior, and Dennis Luskowski. Those are the six individuals for the advisory board. Uh, again, we want to support our local business, especially during these trying times. As you see, Chicago's put a lot of restrictions, and unfortunately, if, if the COVID numbers continue going up, it's going to affect local businesses, so support them now from one end of the, from one end of town to the other and crisscross it as best as you can, or shop from home if you can. We want to give a big thanks out to Public Works. I know they started from the north side going south, uh, to the different sectors of getting rid of all the trees that were blocking, first of all, making, uh, accessibility on our streets and now cleaning up the remaining branches. Again, it's a major, major, was a major, major task. We want to thank all our Public Works and staff for that. Um, the Division Street Bridge was closed for a bit. It's opened back up because of the, uh, uh, examination of the checking of, of it. So that's back up and running. Uh, let me see if I missed anything else. Uh, that's pretty much as to my mayor's announcements. Now, City Clerk, any business?
Um, no business, Your Honor.
Okay, no bids?
No bids.
City Treasurer, uh, let's fly to number one, the approval of inter-fund transfer from unrestricted and restricted accounts. I think everybody should have the amounts. They should have been sent to you in your packet. So I'll need a motion in a second if there's no, if there are any questions.
Fernwald, oops.
Okay, is there a second?
Alderman Carr, I'll second.
Thank you. All right, if no questions, roll call, please.
Bellato. I'm sorry, Bellato. I'm sorry, Bellato. Aye. Rita. Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald. Fernwald, you're muted, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Ten ayes and two noes, Your Honor.
All right, Mr. Clerk, always remind me, the next one, number two, cash collections of the street report. Do we need a motion for that or not?
No, we don't. That's informational.
Okay, and then I have no treasurer's announcement. Um, let me see, City Attorney, anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was discussing with the city clerk just prior to the meeting. Uh, there's a resolution, uh, on the Finance Committee Business approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city and APSME. I sent to all the members of the city council, uh, another copy of the resolution along with a copy of the collective bargaining agreement that had the exhibits for appendixes, appendices C, D, and E. Uh, the copy that was originally sent did not have those exhibits. Those were the only changes.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you. Um, committed report. Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, this Alderman Rita, um, I have a, a matter that needs to be immediately addressed. On Friday, I received an email from the temporary city attorney Carrie Horvath that once again attempted to shame and humiliate me. This email scolded me like I was a child. This is not the first time that Mr. Horvath has sent me written correspondence that has ridiculed and demeaned the actions I was taking as an elected official of the city council. I have been subject on numerous occasions of harassing remarks from Mr. Horvath, which are intended to humiliate and silence me, and this is from the man you appointed, Mayor. Now, I might not have a law degree, but I am an elected member of the city council and represent the good and hard, hardworking people of the third ward. I feel that Mr. Horvath intentionally singles me and other female members of the council to his chauvinistic manner, simply because we are women. I know of no male members of this council who are treated in this fashion. Mayor, I refuse to be subjected to these degrading remarks. I know we all at times have had a difference of opinion on how this city should move forward, but that is not a reason, especially in the year of twenty-twenty, that Mr. Horvath's chauvinistic attitude and remarks will be tolerated. I will not be bullied. I will not be talked down to, and I will not stand for it. Mayor, I am asking that Mr. Horvath be removed from participating in any further city council meetings or city business. This is about fair and equal treatment to all women, and especially the elected officials, who also happen to be women. I'm calling you, Mayor, to abide by your very own code of conduct that you hold our city employees to on sexual discrimination and remove Mr. Horvath from these and future City of Blue Island proceedings. I don't know who you think you are, or if you think that you can treat me this way, or any of my colleagues, but it is shameful. It is no longer the nineteen fifties.
Anything else, Alderman?
No.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Alderman Carr. I would just like to, um, agree with Alderman Rita. There have been times, especially in, uh, closed-door sessions, where I have felt that Mr. Horvath has intentionally ignored me. I've sat there. I've tried to make a statement. I've raised my hand, and he just continues to look past me. And I believe that I should have a voice as much as any other member of the council.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else?
Do you address this? Are you going to address this?
I will look into it. You brought it up. I will look into it.
It shouldn't be swept under the rug, that's for sure.
You know, why are you saying it's going to be swept under the rug? Now you're starting to be the same way with those comments. So I will look into it, Alderman. Both of you. I will look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Committee report. Community Development Committee.
One item on the agenda, um, that was passed our June meeting, the chicken ordinance. The ordinance for twenty-twenty dash zero-three-one, an ordinance to the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter ninety of the Code of Blue Island, Illinois regarding the keeping of poultry. This passed at our June meeting, and I'm going to go through the June and July minutes, um, after we do this. I want to make one change. It was just missed. We lowered, I believe judiciary lowered the amount of, um, footage for a lot size, because the average lot size in Blue Island is less than forty feet wide by a hundred and twenty feet deep. And we based this ordinance off of a neighboring village's ordinance. Their lots are a lot larger than ours. So in essence, if we don't make this one typo change, it, it basically doesn't apply to anybody in town unless your lot size has like seventy, eighty-foot frontage. So there, uh, on the third page, and we changed the one section. We didn't change the other section. On the fourth page, under Regulations and Prohibitions, number one, property shall be zoned, R1, single-family residential with the minimum lot size, lot size of seventy-five-hundred square feet. If we do the average lot size in town, forty by a hundred and twenty, which would exclude some smaller lot size and probably the intent, they shouldn't have chickens, but the average by a hundred and twenty, that would be forty-eight-hundred square feet. So I just want to make that one amendment, uh, and, and I'd like to make a motion on that.
Before you make the motion, could I just make, could I make just one comment on a personal matter, on a personal note? Uh, regarding the chickens, on Irving, growing up, there used to be chickens on Irving, and unfortunately, what we used to have is, uh, mice and rodent problems. And unfortunately, what we used to have is uh, mice and rodent problems as a result of that, as well as the people who had rabbits. So that attracted, I'm just letting you guys know. That could be another issue in the future. I'm just letting everybody know.
And I'll, and I'll explain that. And mayor, I agree 100%. I mean, I, I have them uh, across the street from me and, and down the street from me, and I grew up with them also. In fact, my grandparents had chickens and pigeons and stuff growing at their house. We have nothing on the books right now, zero zilch, anything. You can keep a llama in your backyard if you want right now.
I have a question on this ordinance.
I'm still explaining something, Alderman. Um, so we have nothing, we, we have nothing on the books right now regulating anything. And um, this would be a start. That was the whole premise coming out of community development, a start. And it allows up to 10 hens, no roosters. And if there's issues, that, that this would have to be amended, just like any other ordinance. We have nothing. So right now, if you want to have 100 chickens in your yard, you could have 100 chickens in your yard. There's nothing on the book stopping you.
I understand. Okay. All right. So we're clear. All right. That's fine.
I have a question, Alderman Bilado.
Yes, Alderman Stevo.
Alderman Stevo here. Uh, who, who wrote this ordinance?
Judiciary. It came, I sent the, the ordinance to judiciary, and I believe judiciary sent it to Montana and Welsh. It's a copy pretty much from a Tinley Park ordinance, almost verbatim.
We have a law firm that, a city law firm that does our ordinances, not Montana and Welsh. So I'm moving that we table this ordinance.
Alderman, other ordinances have gone through different law firm before, and I think it's pretty petty at this point. This is just a simple three-page ordinance to table something that obviously has been trying to get done for a year, if not more, um, out of committee, just for redtaping because of we're picking and choosing a law firm. It's not like one law firm billed it and the other one's billing for it. It's a three-page basic ordinance. I think if we need to table this, it's kind of petty just because of political affiliations.
It's not petty, it's not petty on my part. I think it's petty on the judiciary's part that it wasn't sent to our city law firm. That's what's petty about it. Let's play politics. We do not have the money to afford your council. We do not have the money to afford it. The citizens don't have the money to pay for another lawyer.
One law firm or the other would bill for it. Doesn't matter which one would bill for it. The money still pays for it.
Montana and Welsh is the only legislative council. They, they are not permitted to do ordinances.
And that's your opinion, Alderman.
That's not true. Alderman Stevo, that is, that is not true. That is not true. There is nowhere in the rules that says that.
May I be recognized? This Alderman Farnwell.
Go ahead, go ahead, Alderman.
Uh, I do agree with Alderman Stevo, um, but I want to let him know that a little bit down the meeting here, we're going to deal with that issue in a better way. So, and I think the ordinance actually probably is okay. So I'm going to vote for it, but we're going to deal with this in a couple of minutes.
Okay, all right. Everybody is so noted. Is there a motion, is there a motion in a second or is there another question?
I'll second it, Rita.
Alderman Bilado, if you want to make the motion just to adopt the ordinance with the amendment that you've just indicated concerning square footage, you can do that, and then we can avoid going through first amending and then adopting as amended.
I, I thank you, attorney, and I, I believe I said it. If not, I'll say it again. I want to make a motion to approve this ordinance with that amendment lowering from 7,500 square feet to 4,800 square feet.
All right, there's a motion to a second?
I'll second it, Rita.
All right. No more questions. Roll call, please.
Bilado. Bilado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Eleven ayes and one no, your honor.
Thank you.
All right, now I have minutes from the uh, June meeting and July meeting. I'll try to be very thorough real quick through here. Um, so the June 10th meeting, community development. We approved the minutes. We had a discussion on District 130's renovations of the former Sander School. Um, we had concerns on fence height, tree placement, vacating an alley, and the overall aesthetics of the historical building. Uh, Mark Miller notified the committee of the planned public bid on two city properties, 2811 Broadway and 133 Rexford. Uh, there was a motion by Cantello, seconded by Alexander, to approve dumpster enclosures through the grant for Domino's Pizza off 119th Street. Motion carried. There was a motion by Bilado, seconded by Cantello, to approve a new patio through the business district for the Blue Island Beer Company on Old Western Avenue. Motion carried. There was a motion by Alderman Casares, seconded by Cantello, to approve a payment of the Eagle pointing at the Eagle Bowling Alley through the business district grant, um, located on Grove Street. All motion, motion carried, all ayes. Motion by Cantello, Mac, to approve payment of the facade grant expenses. Uh, tuck pointing for Kathy's Flowers, uh, 13022 Western Avenue. Motion carried. A motion by Holly, seconded by Cantello, to approve parking sign with a four-foot high for the Cook County Health Center, located 12757 Western Avenue. Motion carried. Karen Bilado met with the owners of Metro South to dispute the parking issues north of Dimar's Restaurant, and this issue again is still ongoing. Uh, there was a motion by Holly, seconded by Cantello, to allow residents, uh, 12806 California Avenue to remove a dying tree from their parkway. All ayes, motion carried. There was a motion by Bilado, seconded by Casares, to forward Howard's suggestions from the Tinley Park Chicken Ordinance to the judiciary committee. All ayes, motion carried. Ahmed Sandino from the billing department gave his report. Sarah Brown gave the marketing report. There was a motion by Casares, seconded by Cantello, to have attorneys reach out to the new owner of the beer company for a possible land donation to the city. Alderman Mac brought up several issues, including rat, water rain garden issues, and flooding in his ward. Alderman Cantella brought up flooding grants and garage sales and farmers market. Alderman Alexander brought up the census 2020 and asked for updates, and meeting adjourned at 8:22 PM. That was the June meeting. July's meeting, met July 8, 2020. We approved the minutes. There was a parking variance in 1964 Vermont Street. Um, we tabled it pending zoning board of appeals. There was a motion by Bilado, seconded by Holly, to allow a class eight tax proposal for Dollar Tree located 12625 Western Avenue, pending further landscaping requests such as new trees planted and cul-de-sac improvements. All ayes, motion carried. There was a motion by Bilado, seconded by Holly, to approve the advertisement of bids to demolish the former Borden's Milk at 11955 Incent Road, and the possibility, possibility to salvage the Terracotta Sign and donate to the Historical Society. All ayes, motion carried. Eric Alvarez from Robinson Engineering gave an update on possible projects he is planning to apply grant funding through the 2020 ITEP Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. There was a motion by Bilado, seconded by Casares, to approve the library's request for a book drop installed in front of the library. Motion carried. Motion by Casares, seconded by Holly, to approve the business development grant for We Care Cleaners, 2347 119th Street, to install a new garage door. Motion carried. Motion by Bilado, seconded by Cantello, to approve a business grant application for double-place loan at 1311 Western Avenue to install a new awning, needing Howard's final approval. I believe he's in the process of doing that today. They're putting up, motion by Casares, seconded by Cantello, to approve a business development grant for Edible Passport at 13000 Western Avenue to install a new awning. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Bilado, seconded by Holly, to request glass house smokes, 12601 Western Avenue, lower the amount of tobacco sales, or locate to a freestanding building. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Casares, seconded by Holly, to deny Blue Island Health Center, 122, 12757 Western Avenue, to install light pole banners on Western Avenue. The committee recommended they place inside the leased parking lot. Instead, all ayes, motion carried. Alderman Bilado gave an update on his meeting with the new owners of Metro South. They wish to release their ownership of several Western Avenue vacant lots, including the park on Western, Western and York. The committee voted all ayes to pursue possible acquisition of the parcels. Alderman Bilado and Clark Hauser both discussed their findings on property owned that was in dispute on the city block, North Dimar's Restaurant. The city of Blue Island does indeed own one-third of that block, right in the middle. As a result, we demand removal of the towing company signs and all the things to be addressed on these lots. As of today, the maintenance still has not been addressed, and Attorney Horvath is working on this, and he gave an update at last night's meeting. Ahmed Sandino, the building commissioner, gave an update on the maple tree. They did not appear in court to address the issues, so the city attorney will be following up. Arza's restaurant did remove the newspapers and satellite dishes from their property and has a prospective tenant. Sarah Brown gave the marketing report. Kevin Brown spoke about a possible project in conjunction with the Blue Island Arts Alliance for temporary murals painted at the old Easy Easy Go gas station. The committee gave approval, put a proposal together. Howard Capart made an update on the COVID reimbursement process he is working on. Alderman Bilado, along with committee members, spoke on the issues revolving several businesses not complying with COVID recommendation, most notably his place and the vault. The committee was informed that the mayor um, was meeting with the ownership. Alderman Bilado mentioned the parking issues from Cook County Health and requested municipal service committee to place the item on their next agenda. Alderman Casares mentioned the maintenance of the Calseg Trail and MWRD waterfall issues. Alderman Holly inquired for progress of the new restaurant being constructed at the old Amelda's location. That's the building immediately north of Three Sisters Antiques. Ahmed Sandino informed the committee they should be done blacking the sidewalks soon and a restaurant opening soon. Alderman Cantello informed the committee and inquired about the farmer's market. Alderman Alexander inquired about the grand opening date of the new Dollar Tree, which was July 16, 2020. Meeting ended 8:45 PM. And a couple of highlights from last night's meeting, I'm not sorry, last night meeting, our last meeting, um, I brought up the issue with the Vermont Street Calseg bike lanes. It's a huge terrible situation for safety. Um, we're requesting them be rerouted. I believe Eric from Robinson's already working on that. If we can get them rerouted, they were picked over 10 years ago, um, prior to any having a say in this that's on the council now, but um, they're just not safe to be on, on Vermont Street. So we're working on trying to get those uh, moved. And we discussed many other business grant applications. I'll type up the minutes in completion for the next uh, for next city. So that's my update on community development.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Thank you. Uh, finance committee.
For finance committee, we have only the regular accounts payable and payroll, and then we have the uh, agreement. So the first one we have is motion for of payroll, August 7, 2020, for the amount of $338,461.3.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Alderman Hill, second.
Thank you, Alderman. If no questions, roll call, please.
Bilado.
Aye.
Bilado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell. Farnwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next item we have is uh, motion to approval of accounts payable for August 26, 2020, for the amount of $302,328.95. I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Alderman Hill. If no questions, roll call, please.
Other question?
Go ahead, Alderman Hill. Go ahead.
I'd like to table the uh, invoice for Montana and Welsh.
Alderman Stevo, may I ask if I could first, uh, I would relinquish to you if you don't agree with what I'm about to propose?
Go ahead, Alderman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I'd like to uh, move to amend the motion. Amendment is effective 5:00 PM, August 26, that's tomorrow. The city of Blue Island will terminate the services of law firms of Ackerman and Montana and Welsh LLC, and all services provided by those firms through that time. Present of proper invoices.
Is that your motion, Alderman?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do we have a second?
Johnson, second.
Any questions?
Uh, it's not on the agenda. I think you could make a motion to something on the agenda, just uh, uh, to ask the attorney if that's legal or not, if it's not on the agenda. The payables are on the agenda. This is a payables issue. You made more than just a payable issue in your motion. What does our attorney?
Counsel? Counsel?
The motion and the, to uh, terminate the services should be placed on as, as a separate item on the agenda.
Okay.
A motion, but a motion, a motion to amend payables to remove the invoice be appropriate, but a motion to eliminate the services of Montana and Welsh and Ackerman should be placed separately for consideration. Uh, it, that can be done, but it should be placed separately for consideration, Alderman Farnwell.
Thank you. I will do that. Thank you.
I would like, Alderman Steve, I would like to have a uh, vote on the uh, amending the uh, accounts payable to not include the invoice for Montana and Welsh, please.
You have to make a motion, you would make the motion to amend the, or a motion to remove that invoice and then get a second, and then there would be a separate vote on that, or you could make a motion to approve it without that invoice being paid. But I would, I would suggest the first way. To remove it from payables. There's a second and then vote on that, and then vote on the payables if however uh, first motion is decided.
Thank you.
So Alderman Steve, what's your motion?
I make a motion to uh, remove the invoice for Montana and Welsh.
Is there a second?
Second, Johnson.
Thank you.
If, may I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I certainly understand Alderman Stevo's frustration, and I would love not to pay this invoice, but my position has been and continues to be that we do have a legal agreement with the law firm, which I did not agree to. But that doesn't matter. The council uh, unwisely voted to uh, maintain a relationship, an unnecessary and duplicative relationship, and probably one that has some political implications that are pretty obvious. And uh, I don't support it, but uh, I voted against it, but I do understand that the um, invoice, we do owe it. And I will vote to uh, pay it, but it will be very reluctantly.
Okay, roll call, please.
Um, I'm sorry, um, oh, I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, Alderman. Uh, this is Alderman Johnson. The reason, one of the reasons why, you know, um, as uh, Alderman, Donnie, I mean, not Donnie, you, Alderman Bilado stated earlier about the reason why the chicken ordinance didn't go to um, Oluson and Cirque, is because of double billing.
No, it was not.
He stated that out of his mouth. It's on record. So do you want to correct it?
It was not double billing. He said it was not double.
There's no double billing.
So it wouldn't be, so it wouldn't be double billing. That's what he stated out of his mouth, right?
That, that, why should we send the chicken ordinance to a, a different law firm that's, it's already written and ready to go? Why would I?
I understand what you, I understand what you said.
Yeah.
I just wanted to use that as an example from what I'm about to say, okay? Because we had, we, we, well, I didn't, but we have Acosta, right, working on the tie hose, right? One law firm that's supposed to report directly to us, like he did a few, few Mondays ago, to find us. Why is Montana and Welsh billing us for anything to do with the tie hose? And billing with anything with Acosta, when he was supposed to report directly to us? So now Acosta is billing us, and so is Montana and Welsh. Montana and Welsh shouldn't have nothing to do with those tie hose and, and that case at all, when we, or when we say that they were hired strictly to find out about the tie hose. Now, he's billing us too? Come on now, that's just asking a plumber to come fix your sink, and then you hire another plumber to come do the same exact thing that's already been done. That's double billing. And that's blatant, and it's written down, and that's what he's trying to charge the city for. And as Aldermen, we should be ashamed of ourselves for taking advantage of the taxpayers, especially in this critical time. That's all.
Here, here.
Amen.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion. What about, what, what if the mayor um, makes an appointment for an attorney that the city uh, council can all agree with and take a vote on it?
Roll call, please.
So this is to remove the amendment to remove Montana and Welsh's bill from the council's bill.
Correct.
Bilado.
No.
Bilado, no. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Hill.
No.
Hill, no. Mac.
No.
Mac, no. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Zelman.
No.
Zelman, no. Clinker.
Nope.
Clinker, no. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
No.
Alexander, no. Four ayes and eight noes.
All right.
So then that's, the next one will be to pay the accounts payable as presented.
You got a motion? Do we got a second?
I'll second it, Alderman Rita.
Okay. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Bilado.
Yes, there is question. There is question, mayor, because we are actually getting ready to take the money from There is question, Mayor, because we are actually getting ready to take the money from the taxpayers to pay another attorney for the exact same thing we paying attorney for to do that we already paying?
That's not true.
Is that what we, is that what we're voting for?
No, that is not true.
One person at a time.
Are we voting to pay Montana and Welch for doing anything with the tie holes that we already paying a separate law firm to do? Is that what we're voting for right now?
No, we're voting for Montana and Welch for the work that they've done for the city because we have an agreement. They've done the work. You can't ask somebody to do work. They cut, they say they come to your house, do the work, and then you decide not to pay them. That's not right. You have to pay people for their services, where it's not double billing.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Johnson.
If you asking him, if you asking us to pay him for the tie holes, and we already paying another law firm for it, that's double billing.
What is going on with the tie holes?
Alderman Fernwald, may I make a comment? Actually, you know, I, I gotta say, Alderman Johnson makes an excellent point. They both, both firms have billed us for this work, and it's not supposed to happen, so I don't think it's valid. I'm not going to vote for this, period. I'm just not. It's wrong.
Okay.
Citizens deserve better.
Got it. Roll call, please.
Alderman Alexander. I just want to make a point that we wouldn't have this discussion if the mayor would come forth with the information that's been requested with this investigation, and then.
Alderman, as I told you before, that information was already given to the authorities, and your investigator has come up with nothing, so that's where it's at.
Okay.
You hire a criminal attorney?
Not over talking.
Nope.
Okay?
Thank you.
Everybody else has their turn to speak. I'm speaking now. Again, if all the information that's involved in this investigation would come forth, we wouldn't have to do that until then.
I gave everything to the authorities and not to our local council. They have everything. The Cook County State's Attorney has it, what I know.
Okay. Thank you. I agree with Alderman Alexander. We wouldn't have to be doing this if we would have had the facts from the get-go.
There's a lot of things we didn't have to do for certain Aldermen, too. All right. Roll call, please.
Double billing is one of them.
I'm, I'm the accounts payable. Bellato.
The accounts payable in the entirety, aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
No.
Fernwald, no. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
Absolutely not.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Absolutely yes.
Alexander, aye. Nine ayes and three noes.
Thank you very much.
Last item under Finance is our attorney mentioned previously, Resolution Number 2020-036, a resolution approving and authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Blue Island, AFSCME, AFSMI, Council 31, Local 1172, for the period of January 1st, 2018, to December 31st, 2021. And I'll make a motion on this.
Is there a second?
Zelman, I'll second.
Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Eleven ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have for Finance.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee.
Public Health and Safety met last Tuesday. I don't have minutes done yet, so our next meeting is September 15th, 2026 p.m.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Municipal Services Committee.
Yes, Your Honor, we met on July the 14th. Present were Eric Alvarez, Alderman Mac, Alderman Fernwald, Bob Jackson, Alderman Stevo, and Alderman Carr. Absent were Jim Polster, Betty Harmeyer, Ted Ruthenberg, and Alderman Rita. Also present was Randy Hoiser. The meeting was called to order at 6:05 p.m. There was a letter from Doris Topansky in regards to the lead pipe replacement project. She is vehemently against this. Under Public Works, Jim Polster was absent due to the storm on August 9th. Municipal Services still actively cleaning up. The committee was sent the monthly report in advance for their review. Alderman Fernwald presented ideas to relieve the parking problems on Oak Street caused by the Cook County Health Center opening. He mentioned that the parking lots designated for Cook County were being underutilized and employees are parking on Oak Street. He suggested that, one, on Western, the parking could be limited to two-hour, one-hour, or 30-minute parking. Two, the Cook County parking lot could be returned to public use. Three, the possibility of resident parking only, which may open up requests by residents on other streets. Herr Hoiser interjected that the county is considering declaring eminent domain and taking the parking lot for their exclusive use. He also mentioned the parking problems involving Raven's Place, and that we may want to address all the parking issues at once. Alderman Stevo mentioned that parking issues are also affecting the 7th Ward, and the city may want to look into a shuttle from the metro station to the Cook County building, and that Cook County should pay for. There was a motion to approve handicap parking for 12506 Highland and 12506 Elm by Alderman Fernwald, second by Alderman Mac. All in favor, motion carried. There was a motion to rescind handicap parking for 2951 Edison by Alderman Stevo, second by Alderman Mac. All in favor, motion carried. Under the Water Department, Betty Harmeyer was absent due to the power outage. The monthly report had been sent to members of the committee previously. There was still no information from the residents of the 5th Ward on overcharges of their water bills. Under the John D. Rita Rec Center, Bob Jackson had previously sent his report to members of the committee. Alderman Carr asked if we knew when Crawford Roofing would be out to repair the roof. Mr. Jackson said all the work had been completed in August. The city was still waiting on inspection of the HVAC system and the rules, and the rule sign to be erected. There had been two requests for the use of the outdoor facilities, which were turned down by the COVID-19 task force. Alderman, it was mentioned that Alderman Alexander was having a mask giveaway on Thursday, August the 13th, from 4:00 to 6:00. Alderman Stevo asked if the rec center was completely closed. Mr. Jackson said that other than walking in the gym in the morning, there were no activities. Alderman Stevo asked if the work for the inspection and repairs of the roof had been approved. It had been approved by the Finance Committee. Alderman Stevo said he thought the rec center was completely closed by the COVID-19 task force. It had not been. Under the golf course, Ted Ruthenberg was unable to attend the meeting, but informed the chairman that he had received quotes for the netting for the homes on Elm Drive, but was unable to send them due to the city server being down. Under Robinson Engineering, Eric Alvarez said that there was a memo put together on the 5th Ward flooding problems for the mayor. Alderman Fernwald thanked Mr. Alvarez for the report. Alderman Carr said that it seemed that little progress had been made since 1993, and that she would be pushing four projects to remediate the flooding. Alderman Mac said he had seen the damage and destruction of personal property over the last three to five years. Eric Alvarez said that they've been shifting away at the issue. Alderman Fernwald suggested that the city hold in-home consultations to help the residents alleviate problems where they could. Alderman Stevo asked what Robinson Engineering 5th Ward Correction, Corrective Action Plan was. Mr. Alvarez said that the MWRD is currently working on a separate sewer system and a relief sewer system. Alderman Mac asked how long these projects would take. Mr. Alvarez said it would take several years of study and then years of development. Mr. Alvarez explained the FEMA grant for flooding relief for the 5th Ward. There was a motion by Alderman Mac, second by Alderman Fernwald. All in favor, motion carried. Alderman Stevo asked about the corrective action plan for the work already done in the 5th Ward. Alderman Fernwald asked that we move on the CDVG grant for Collins Street. The grant increased the funding available by $42,000. There was a motion to send us the finance by Alderman Fernwald, second by Alderman Stevo. All in favor, motion carried. Mr. Alvarez talked about the ITEP funding for bicycle and pedestrian paths. Alderman Carr said that the community development committee had not approved the research for this project and suggested that the project be brought to, back to community development. There were no other Alderman concerns. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Fernwald, second by Alderman Stevo. Meeting ended at 7:00 o'clock. Our next regular meeting will be September 8th at 6:00.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we have, I have my minutes from August 18th. The remote video Zoom meeting was called to order Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, at 7:24 p.m. in Blue Island, Illinois, with proper public notice given, held remotely as permitted by Executive Order 202007, signed by Governor J.B. Pritzker on March 15, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Instructions given to participate remotely. Download the Zoom app or call 312-626-6799. Judiciary meeting webinar ID 872566785689. That's 872541. Roll call taken of the committee with Alderman Rand, Kentello Zelman, Alderman Johnny Ringo Hill, Alderman Holly, Alderman Kevin Donahue, who pressed it. Also in attendance, Clark, sorry, Clerk Randy Howes, Loretta Alderman Allen Stevo, Mike Cindy, and our tech. Ben. The email, only persons interested in making public comments must email their public comment to nred@cityofblueland.org by August 18th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Emailed public comments received will be read during the public comment portion of the meeting. By Alderman Nancy Rita, public comment by Mike Cindy. Can someone please explain the overnight parking ordinance, number 2014-046? According to the Blue Island website, it states that the overnight parking ordinance that requires vehicles parked on residential streets from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. must display a valid Blue Island City sticker. Attached is a screenshot from the Blue Island Police Department's Facebook page posted on October 30th, 2014, which once again states a new ordinance put in effect as of October 28th, 2014. This ordinance states that you cannot park your vehicle on any public street in Blue Island between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. unless you possess a valid Blue Island City sticker. What is required so that the vehicles can be parked overnight on a Blue Island street? Thank you for your time and attention. It was explained that you must, it was explained that you must have a valid Blue Island City sticker, and the vehicle must be registered in Blue Island. Amend overnight, then we did amend overnight parking ordinance since the public comment had to do that, with that. The overnight parking ordinance is a tool for the police department to use for city sticker enforcement and to help process stolen or abandoned vehicles. Discussion to amend various parts of the ordinance. Under Section 1, Part C, question the handicap language. Section 1, add Part D, language, accompany business-owned vehicle registered in another city where the business, where the city is located, but for the use of an employee who is a Blue Island resident. Also, to add a $50 fee for the permanent business placard in lieu of the $50 city sticker. Add the language. Register to the City of Blue Island. Under Section 2, add language, when requesting overnight parking for more than one night, give a beginning date through an end date. Under Section 4, it states handicap parking will be done administratively rather than go through a committee to speed the process. Draft to be finalized for the next judiciary meeting for discussion. And I've invited Chief RZAB to also join in that discussion. Then the next on the, in the minutes, amended cannabis business establishment ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amended nine business regulations of the Code of Blue Island, Code of Blue Island, Illinois regarding cannabis business establishments. Alderman Kentello Zelman began a discussion regarding what the surrounding areas are charging. It was agreed to amend the draft ordinance to charge $2,000 for a first-time cannabis business license fee and $1,000 for the renewal fee. Motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Holly, amending the title cannabis business establishment. Alderman Donahue, Alderman Holly, Alderman Hill, Alderman Zelman, voting yes, all in favor, motion carried, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Before it goes to vote, and maybe we can get the advice of lawyers, city attorney, if there's a family member who might have an interest in such a business, can that elected official vote on this?
What are you talking about?
The, the, the elected official should, if that is the case, should probably disclose that as a fact and indicate whether that official has an interest or not in the property or in the license.
Thank you.
May I ask, may I ask a question on, on a previous matter that was mentioned by Alderman Rita in her minutes, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Of amending the overnight parking ordinance, if, if I could get a copy of Alderman Rita's minutes, that would appreciate it so that we can accomplish that.
All right. So noted.
I sent it to Montana and Welch.
May I ask, Mayor, was that authorized by the city council?
Not that I know.
It doesn't need to be authorized by the city council. This is petty.
It's not petty.
So the present ordinance, again, remember elected officials, if a family member has an interest, it better be disclosed now.
So I was, all right, I have a question. I'm assuming you're speaking about me?
No, there's other people also involved. Go ahead.
We have a motion from Alderman Rita to approve ordinance number 2020-030. We're looking for a second.
Clinker.
Clinker, a second.
Okay. If any questions?
I have a question, Alderman Stevo. I didn't.
Go ahead.
I haven't, I haven't received a copy of this ordinance. Can we table this in the next meeting so we can get a copy of it and understand?
It was in the, excuse me, Alderman Stevo, it was in the packet.
I haven't, I haven't received it.
Mr. Herveth, wasn't, it was included in the packet. You included it, and you gave it to, you sent it to Lori, correct?
We sent it to the administrative assistant for the police chief, and it was in my packet. And it was in my packet. I don't prepare the packets, though. I submit our information to the administrative assistant and she submits it to the city council.
It's, it's in the packet. I'm looking at it right now.
Thank you.
So if you got the email that had the agenda and the second page, the second part that we got from Lori Salgado last week, you should have it, Mr. Stevo.
Did you get the second part of the packet, Mr. Stevo? Alderman Stevo, I'm sorry.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have it. I'm sorry about that.
It's, we got two parts and you're on the email, so I'm not sure how you didn't get it, but somebody needs to figure out if there's something wrong with the email. But we got two parts from Lori, like we always do. Here's the first packet for the council meeting. Here's the second packet and it's on the second packet. I'm scrolling through, looking at it right now.
May I make a suggestion? This is Alderman Farnwell.
Go ahead.
Apparently, we don't know why, but Alderman Stevo doesn't have it and we'll let him have a look at it. So I, I guess I table it until next meeting.
Alderman Bilado, I have a question for the attorney, just clarification.
Yes, go ahead.
Attorney, Carrie. This ordinance is, is there a time restraint on this thing? It never was in my committee. I didn't, I'm not fully grasping what the issue is here. There, this is a taxing thing. Can you give a brief update then to the council who, like Alderman Stevo, need to be updated on this?
The, this ordinance, first, first off, defines the various types of cannabis business establishment and can operate in the city based upon them obtaining, obtaining a location in accordance with the zoning ordinance, which you, your committee prepared and which was adopted by the city council. It then requires a license.
Okay.
It has. Application process, the initial application fee apparently was decided, the judiciary committee apparently decided to charge a two thousand dollar fee for the initial application. And then on renewal, that would, that would be a one thousand dollar license fee on annual renewals. The ordinance provides for inspection, revocation and suspension. It also has a hearing process and then some basic general regulations to address police reporting, identification of employees, control of odors, delivery, lighting, prohibition of minors. It addresses the hours of operation so that they cannot open prior to six in the morning and remain open later than ten P M. It addresses cannabis dispensaries and what they can and can't do and, and how they have to store or make visible and package their products. It addresses cannabis transporters and what they are allowed to do and what they cannot do. Talks to, it also addresses advertising signage and where it can be located. So that is a, presented then in conjunction with the previous ordinance that was adopted by the city council concerning where these facilities can be located. And also, the ordinance was, which was adopted quite some time ago, addressing the taxation, the local taxation on the sale of cannabis.
So this is just the regulation follow up with what we did and spent all that months with. It's just like the hours, the fees, just like we do with any kind of business license, boilerplate, plate stuff here. It's not individual business we're talking about. No one applied to my knowledge. This is just a licensing, so we can able to charge and regulate if someone does apply, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so there's no issue. It's good to have it so people can apply if they have it. I know the state hasn't released anything because of COVID, so nobody would even be applying anytime soon, or at least not right now. But I see no issue here where it's controversial. We did the controversial part already. We, we voted to allow it. This is just licensing and fees and regulation, so I'm in favor of just passing it then.
The only question.
Is there a motion and a second?
There was a motion and a second to table the ordinance. And so if there's a motion and second to table the ordinance, it has to be addressed or withdrawn, one or the other.
There was a motion by Alderman Stevo, no second to table.
I thought Alderman Farnwell seconded it. I'm not sure.
Oh, I'll second it. I make it, yeah.
Okay.
I, I will.
Go ahead.
About this, I, whether it's a routine issue or not, the mayor suggests that there are at least two Aldermen, maybe more, who have a financial interest and that certainly should be disclosed. I, it doesn't make it a bad thing, it just should be disclosed. And that ought to be done, or if it's not done, I won't.
There's a motion to second to table.
Roll call, please.
Bilado.
No.
Bilado, no. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Hill.
No.
Hill, no. Mac.
Nope.
Mac, no. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Zilman.
Yes.
Pardon me?
I pass.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Zilman abstain. Clinker.
No.
Clinker, no. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
No.
Alexander, no. Three ayes. He knows and one abstention.
All right, thank you very much.
So I'm the.
Now is there a motion to go the way it is?
That was by Rita and Clinker.
All right, no questions, roll call, please.
Bilado. Bilado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
I only heard one abstention. Thank you, Alderman Zilman, so I will vote no.
Farnwell, no. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
Abstain.
Zilman abstain. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Eight ayes. Three noes and one abstention.
Thank you very much.
Damage claims, property damage claim twenty twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-seven in the amount of two hundred seventy-five dollars. Motion to authorize payment in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five dollars made by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Cantello Zilman, Alderman Donahue, Alderman Holly, Alderman Hill, Alderman, Alderman Cantello Zilman, voting yes, all in favor, motion carried. I'd also like to do approval of the property damage claim twenty twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-seven.
So there's a motion, is there a second? Alderman Carr.
I'll second.
Alderman.
Any question?
A question?
Go ahead.
I just wondered why we're approving this. In the past, I, my, my experience, we've denied these claims because it's really the golfer's fault. It's not the city's fault. And my concern on this is that if we vote this, and it's not a large amount, I, I understand, but if someone were to drive a golf ball into one hundred and twenty-third street into a car and it caused a crash and there was a major event and maybe injury and God forbid death, it seems like we're opening ourselves up to being liable for that.
Alderman Farnwell, I actually thought the same thing the last time we had this on the judiciary agenda, but I was informed by Odelson and Stirk that that wasn't the case. And actually, Odelson, they're the ones that approved this and, and told us what we should do, gave us.
Attorney Horvath, could you just explain that to me a little bit? Thank you.
Yes, we did in this particular instance approve the claim because we did not, we thought that the small size of the claim did not, or having to address it in the small claims court, so we authorized approval of this particular claim rather than incur the costs and attorney's fees that would have been incurred to defend it in court.
Just to ask you the question that I just asked, does this open us up to a future?
Oh, it does not. No, that, it does not. It does not, no.
Any other questions? It's not roll call, please.
Bilado.
Aye.
Bilado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Alderman Commons, Alderman Johnny Hill gave statistics regarding coronavirus and emphasized the importance of wearing masks, washing hands and social distancing. At eight fifteen P M, a motion to adjourn was made by Alderman Hill, second by Alderman Cantello Zilman, Alderman Donahue, Alderman Holly, Alderman Hill, Alderman Cantello Zilman, voting yes, all in favor, motion carried to adjourn. Our next Zoom Judiciary Committee meeting will be September fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven P M. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any Aldermanic announcements or comments?
Yes, this is Alderman Hill. I have a couple of comments. One, I would like to thank Jim for, and his staff for Public Works for doing a terrific job. And secondly, I got a call this, this morning from Shantel Williams at twenty-three, twenty-one, one hundred and twentieth street concerning the overnight parking. She had a problem that there was no signs posted stating that there was no overnight parking and she wants to know why we can't put up signs.
Because we have an ordinance.
Pardon me?
Because we have the ordinance, the overnight ordinance.
I, I tried to explain that to her, but she didn't want to hear it, so.
Any, any other comments?
And this is Alderman Carr.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to commend Public Works for everything they did after the storm. I know it took them probably three days of sixteen hour days, just trying to clean up everything. And I know that there still is minor cleanup being done, so I wanted to thank them for that.
I think it was more like a week, Alderman, but it's a great job on behalf of Public Works, the whole staff. Thank you.
Alderman Farnwell.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I know this is going to sound like blah, 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 but I do want to follow up on Alderman Hill's comment, which was a very good one about wearing masks and now we're all sick of hearing about it, but it's really important. The state, the region, the area that we're in, area, it's a region ten, we've been creeping up on our positivity rate. We're just crossing over seven and when we get to eight, every, a lot of, going to get shut down again and our businesses don't need that. They need to stay open. And last, I walked by the car show, which is a tremendous success and I think it's just awesome, and the lot was full of people and nobody, nobody was wearing a mask. And that is just plain foolish. The result is we're going to go over eight with behavior like that, the businesses are going to get shut down, up to each and every one of us. It's an individual responsibility. Nobody can be forced to do it. We can scream and yell all we want, but I'm just making a plea to everybody listening, wear your mask. It's not, do, it will keep our economy going, it will save lives of someone you know and love. It's really, really important. Please do it.
Thank you very much, Alderman. You know what, Alderman, unless it hits home, hits a loved one, that's when they finally see the light.
Yeah, yeah.
This is Jim Clinker. So we got, we got an email from Marisol last week about Ravens saying that you were suspended their license and there's going to be a hearing scheduled. Can you, is there any updates?
Let me just call in this route. There was one scheduled last Friday. They continued it. They asked for a date. There's another hearing scheduled for this coming Friday. That's all I can disclose at this time.
Okay, thank you.
They remain closed. Their, their licenses are suspended until further notice, until the end of the hearing.
Mayor, if I may, very, very. There's actually not a hearing scheduled for Friday. The attorneys for Ravens Place and the Vault requested that we meet so that we could discuss all of the various charges that have been included in the citations that we filed against them. So that is what we're doing, but no hearing is set and until such time as a hearing is set, the, the closure order will remain in effect. So I, I just wanted to correct that one.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
If I may, just as one point, I listened carefully to what Alderman Rita and Alderman Carr said and I remained silent and I don't want it construed that my silence is in agreement that there is any truth to what either of them said, but I will respond after you inquire of me what my point of view is, as you indicated you would do, and then I will respond accordingly.
All right, thank you. Any other Aldermanic announcements? Just, just let me, let, Alderman, just let me, let me just add this. You know that tomorrow, the next day is going to be a very extremely hot in this area? So again, check our websites or if you know any loved ones or any people of need, check up on them the next two days, especially tomorrow and the next day. And our cooling centers will be open for the next couple of days. Go ahead, Alderman.
Well, yes, Mayor Vargas, thank you. Can we have the twenty twenty ordinances placed on the city website when, when it's possible?
Sure.
I'm putting them all together, yes, I'll get it.
Thank you. And Mayor, we've been through a lot the last few weeks and everyone has been telling me about your leadership and I want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. And if I could add this, within the last day or so, there's been the notice of death of certain residents in Blue Island. One of them particularly yesterday of Penny, our love old lady who used to walk up and down Western Avenue, she passed. Another one is Victor Aguilar, ninety-nine years of age. His son plays, played baseball with his twins on Irving, so Mr. Aguilar passed the other day. And then Mrs. Bruno, John the Peaceless's mother, who was also my mother's classmate, she passed the other day also. And that's just a few of the people that I know who died within the last day or so, residents of Blue Island who will be deeply missed but never forgotten. If there are no other.
Alderman, I'm sorry. Mayor, Alderman Rita.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I wanted just to follow up regarding the rodent eradication with the rat abatement, the traps.
So you, so you know, I signed everything and I would assume we wanted to go local, a local vendor, and I think that's where we are right now. And then if we haven't signed it, it should be hopefully ready to go. But I signed all the documents that I needed to sign and I'll check up on finance tomorrow and see if they got the vendors ready to go.
Yeah, we did. We voted on that at the last.
Yeah, so I, I'll double, I'll double check, but it should be all packed up and going.
So I wanted just to follow up because you said the third ward would be the pilot program, so if.
Yeah, it will.
I emailed our health inspector, Susan Wagner, and wasn't aware of it. So I was, if you could please ask her to do a weekly, weekly report.
Okay.
My block and to me, to me and Alderman Donahue for the third ward, I truly appreciate that.
You got it. You got it, no problem.
Mayor Vargas, one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, at the last, at the last meeting, Alderman Rita, last city council meeting, you, you didn't know why it took so long for this rat abatement program to get moved and to get started.
Right.
And the reason, I can tell you why it took so long, is because Chairman of the Finance Committee, Donahue, sat on it. That's the only reason why. So now you, now you know.
Okay, this is Jim, this is Jim Clinker. I'd like to add a little on to that. The reason this took so long is I brought this up over a year ago because it was brought to me when I was campaigning. I went to Brian, the previous helping building guy, and he pretty much blew me off. So that's the reason it's taken so long. Whether it got caught up in committee or not is not the issue. The issue is this has been going on way too long. It finally got done and I'm glad to see that. And we need to make sure that the health inspector is on board and we get this thing going.
You got it, okay. Any other announcements or comments? If not, I need a motion for adjournment.
This is Alderman Hill.
Go ahead, Alderman, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I would just like to say thank you to Julia Plum for the care of the rain gardens. She's starting to take care of them and I just wanted to thank her.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there any other Alderman, any other? Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to bring about, and I have reported this to the building department about these buildings that doesn't keep up with their grass and, and their buildings are adjacent to residence homes and now they really complaining of like these snakes and, and rodents and things that's all in their yards and where they're disturbing their comfortability. I think we need to jump on that because even if I had to go cut it myself, I don't want these, this to happen. It's just something simple, just a cut and we can just continue to charge the company or the business that's, that's being in violation.
Okay. Alderman, what I just noticed on, on social media the other day, there's, I don't know if the high school in Iowa where the kids, and this is something that needs to be checked out, kids who are young people who are in high school get credit, P E credit, if they do community service, like cutting lawns, trimming hedges in their neighborhood. Maybe that's something we can look into as a community project or for, for students. If it can be done. Maybe that's something we can look into as a community project or for, for students, if it can be done legally. And without the liability. So let's, let's check up on all of that.
This is.
It was the liability because we had like a maricor come in before and they were volunteering, doing different things, but they didn't want them to be able to cut grass, weed whackers, anything that could cause. You know, something, an injury of sort, but they had office work and we had them painting and doing different other stuff.
Correct.
But it was certain things that they just couldn't do. But whatever we can do, because it, it's, it's a, it's an issue. I know they've been reaching out to the owners of these businesses and they're not responding, but it still shouldn't make our residents uncomfortable.
Right. And you know that a group of volunteers along with myself have addressed some of those businesses and we have seen that ourselves, but you're right. We'll, we'll check up on that. Any other ones?
I appreciate it as well, Mayor, but I wanted to comment about the ComEd outage. And that when ComEd came to bring in the water for us to appease us for the six days that we were out without power. And when it came, when they came in several times without the right equipment to fix the problem, it only took two and a half hours to fix. It took us six days to get that. And our water was out. Our water was out.
Right. I think, Alderman, I think we discussed that because of maybe some union issues or overtime issues or contracting issues that could have come into play in that.
Yeah, I understand whatever the issues might have been, but it took them two and a half hours to resolve a problem that extended to six days. My block, I have a lot of elderly and sick people, medications and things of that nature that needed them being, you know, been taken care of. So I'm not going, I'm not going to applaud them from the water. When the water wasn't shut off, it was electricity. That was.
Cut it. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? It's not in a motion for adjournment in a second. Well, we'll need a roll call. Roll call, please. I need a motion in a second, then roll call.
I have a comment, a question rather.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Do you have a status on the social justice committee?
That's the one I just read to you. I, I gave that to you in my mayor's announcement. That's the group.
Okay. And do you know when they're going to stop meeting?
Well, given COVID and we're going to have to decide, got to see when they can all get together. It's going to probably have to be by Zoom.
Tom said, I don't know what's going on.
All right. I need a motion in a second for adjournment and then I need roll call.
Move, Fernwald.
I'll second, Alderman Rita.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Rita, Lado.
Aye.
Lado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly. Holly, you're muted. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Okay. Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone. Be safe, especially the next couple of days. Thank you very much.